Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guetta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Potem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Talamontes, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wiltamranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. Welcome to my colleagues. Welcome to the city staff. Most important, welcome to the members of the public, both who are in the audience but also watching livestream, on television, however many ways to watch our meetings these days. We begin tonight, first of all, with my asking the Assistant City Attorney whether there are any items. There's no closed session, so there would be no items out of closed session. Thank you. Glad we had a meeting of the minds on that. It's excellent. Thank you. We begin with a couple of very important special presentations. And the first, of course, is recognizing the Stephon A. Clark Day of Reflection presented by Mayor Potem Myveng.
Thanks, Mayor. I was gonna say, maybe we have the Phoebe Hurst students go first because of the school.
Want to do that?
But happy to go first as well. We just want to be mindful of students' time, but I'm happy to go either way.
Why don't we do that first, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion.
They got homework.
Okay.
As a previous school board member.
Without objection.
Councilmember Kaplan agrees.
We will begin with the second special presentation, then go back to the Stephon Clark Day of Reflection. Recognizing Phoebe Hurst as a California Distinguished School, I turn it over to our colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Awesome. Well, I have the great pleasure of presenting this award, of this resolution tonight. So since 1985, the Distinguished Schools Program recognizes schools for closing the achievement gap and for achieving exceptional student performance. And this year, we are so proud that Phoebe Hurst Elementary was named as a 2023 Distinguished School, which is, I will note, the third time that they have received this award in their illustrious history. This is more than just rigorous curriculum, which they definitely have. This is also about student and staff wellness and really providing that holistic experience that honors culture and social norms as well as the academic performance of their students. It's really the whole package that makes the staff and students successful at schools like Phoebe. And I have to say that I think coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic to get this award in 2023 says a lot about your school and how you were able to take care of your staff, take care of your students, to ensure that they could still be good students, as well as good people in the light of such extreme crisis and really a challenging time for all of us. And so I think this carries a special mention this year of all years to get this award. So I technically don't represent this community yet, but the mayor and I really wanted to make sure that until you have an official council member, that we did not let this moment pass. And we made sure that we took time to recognize all of the hard work that you do every single day, but particularly in this moment. So I know tonight, we have so many students and teachers and parents with us. We have one of our new board trustees who represents this area, Jasjeet Singh, who's come, as well as the Sacramento City Unified Superintendent Jorge Aguilar. But I would like to pass the mic over to the principal, Doyle Martin. Will you please come up here, Principal Martin? And tell us the secret to your success, please.
Well, I don't have a secret. It's the people, the parents, the teachers, the kids. I'm just a paper pusher. I don't do anything. I give all the credit, especially Michelle Bichette, the previous principal. I give her a lot of the credit. But I know we have here, actually, just come on up. Just come on up. So I have to call you out by name. Parent, if you're a parent, if you're a student of Phoebe Hurst, a teacher, please come on up too.
Yes, please.
So it takes, it's a team effort. It really is. It takes collaboration, and it takes a buy-in, into a vision, into a willingness to give your kids everything that they need to be successful. And so everyone here behind me is part of that team. And so I'm going to actually ask a couple of my students to come up, because they're the ones who do the work.
Welcome.
And this is actually right here. This is Mateo, who's actually, this year, started a journalism club and has put out the first issue of our school newsletter. And so I will let Mateo say a few words.
Yeah, you can move right over if you want there. Welcome. There you go. You got a mic.
There we go.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I tell a little bit about Phoebe? Phoebe Hurst is very, has very, has a lot of academics going on as well as a lot of fun. So there's the opportunity to create clubs and the opportunity to get a ton of extra work done in class.
You are so articulate, by the way. I mean, really, so well spoken. Wow.
This year at Phoebe, they started a student council.
What's your name?
Madeline. That I am glad they took in part of. And I feel like it's only one of the things that Phoebe has contributed to what they gave to the students. And I feel like it only adds a little bit of what its greatness.
Excellent. Same.
Yes, you do. I'm gonna pay for this tomorrow, but this is Teresa Ching, one of our teachers.
Hi, I'm Teresa Ching, and I teach second grade at Phoebe Hurst. And I've been there, I think, about 10 years. And when I meet parents and teachers, especially new teachers, I just tell them, I just yell at the kids. I don't know what I do here, but these kids come in with so much. They come in with curiosity, with passion. All we need to do is just say, run with it. What do you want to do? How do we do this? And so we're just there to support. We facilitate. It's a great school. Thank you so much for the honor.
One more. From a parent.
From a parent, yeah. And then I know the board member and superintendent are here too, so I don't want them to feel neglected. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jessica Atia, and I'm a parent, and I have a kindergartner, Nico, and my son, Simon, who couldn't be here tonight, is a second grader in Mrs. Ching's class, actually. And I have had the joy of being a parent here at Phoebe Hurst, and it's been a lot of fun over the past few years, and a lot of hard work, and many friendships being built. And I'm part of the PTO and helping out in the classrooms, and I couldn't love it anymore. So love all the people and very grateful for this achievement for our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need this. Hello? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you. I actually want to recognize the students, the staff, the parents. The biggest thing that I've learned so far in my short 92 days, I am counting, I think that's what it is, is the fact that every school should strive to be like Phoebe Hurst. We have a school that is distinguished. We have a school that is known for its academic excellence, but also for parent participation. We have amazing teachers, amazing staff, and this is the type of school that I want to make sure all our schools are aspiring to be, so we can try to get more schools to look at this school, to try to set an example for our students in our district. So just really want to appreciate you all for giving this recognition and making these kids feel special today. So thank you.
Thank you so much, board members. Good evening, council members. Mayor Steinberg, what an honor for us to be here with our school community, representing 75 different schools in Sacramento City Unified. Of course, I look at some of you, and if we had to do some kind of emergency meeting between former school board members, Board President Chinua Rhodes, or current members, we probably would have a quorum. So we stand and continue to do the legacy work that you started when you were school board members in Sac City Unified. We have a very, very talented Board of Education today that is striving to continue to pierce through challenges so that we can have 75 distinguished schools. So I want to just thank our community, thank Board President Chinua Rhodes, who's here with us, of course, our trustee Jasjeet Singh, our wonderful newer, but not newer, to the school district, Doyle Martin, and of course, most importantly, our families, our students, who are amazing, and we're very proud of you. So thank you very much for the honor.
Thank you. And I'd love to get a picture with everybody before you go home to keep those grades up and get next year's distinguished award. So if you want to come up here in the front, maybe we can... Mayor, do you want to join me down there?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Talamontes.
I'm good, I'm good.
I told him, "No, you can't do that."
Okay, guys. President Rhodes, turn around. Picture. We got city council business, buddy.
Students up front?
Can we squeeze in a little bit? Front row?
Just take a picture of the mayor, the back of mayor's head.
Yeah, I got it.
One more. One, two, three, and last one. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mayor.
Mayor? Yes, of course. While you are coming back to your seat, I just wanted you to know that Mateo and Madeline had the opportunity to sit in the mayor's seat and the city manager's seat. What? What? They have a plan of action that they want to move forward. I told her it, I told her it had to go on the agenda first, but next meeting, I think they want to put it on the agenda so they can move their items forward. I think it can be arranged, actually. Yes. Willing. Yeah, what a great way to start our meeting. Really so proud of Phoebe Hurst and superintendent, school board members, and the community that really fights for kids. That's what you do. So we're very, very grateful. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing that forward. That was terrific. Okay, now we'll go back to the first resolution of the day, and I turn it over to my colleague, Mayor Potem Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have the proud honor to co-present a resolution for the annual Stephon Alonzo Clark Day of Reflection in the city with Councilmember Jennings. This resolution is being presented to the Clark family tonight, whom I have had the honor of working closely with when I was a community organizer and before I was elected to the city council. Over the past year, past five years, I have had the opportunity to work closely with Grandma Sequita, that's in the audience, Mama Clark Sequet, who I believe is on Zoom, and Savante Clark in the audience, on numerous community events and conversation. And as you all know, on March 18th, 2018, Stephon Clark was killed in Medeville, just a few streets down from my house. And this week, there will be several community events to commemorate the life and legacy that Stephon Alonzo Clark has left behind and left in this community. Since the death of Stephon Clark, the entire Clark family has mobilized to create change in this city, not just in the city, but in the state and in this country as well. In 2019, there was a creation of Blessed Child Association in Medeville, led by Grandma Sequita. In 2019, I Am SAC Foundation was created by Savante Clark, which bridges the gap between law enforcement at-risk, underserved communities and really educate our communities about the different statewide policy and legislation. And most importantly, I Am SAC Foundation has provided a healing space for many of our communities. In 2019, our Governor Gavin Newsom signed California Bill 392, also known as the Stephon Clark Law, a police use of force bill that redefines the circumstances under which the use of lethal force could be used by a police officer. And then in 2022, just last year, the Stephon A. Clark College Prep Middle School opened its door, and it's teaching sixth through eighth grade scholars in South Sacramento. And lastly, but not least, Mama Clark, the mother of Stephon Clark, created ERA of the Vote Program, ensuring that we can educate communities in South Sacramento to register to vote, and also ensuring that there's a 24-hour ballot box, drop-off box, right on Medeville Road at Genesis Church. I just also want to share that it's been five years since the death of Stephon Clark, and I know that we still have so much more work ahead as a city to ensure safety in all of our neighborhoods. I also want to share personally that, over the course of five years, many folks have asked me why I don't cite the Pledge of Allegiance. And I was debating if I should share this with all of you tonight, but I feel like the timing makes sense for me. And so, you know, I used to cite the Pledge of Allegiance as a student and even as a school board member, until 2018, when Stephon Clark was killed. And that following morning, I remember feeling incredibly heartbroken, and I asked myself, how does a young black man die in his grandma's backyard who is not armed? For me, there is just something inherently wrong with our country and our society when that happens. And so I just want to say, I love this country so much that I know she can be better. So for me, I do stand when we recognize the flag. I stand because I know the privileges that this country has provided me as a daughter of refugees and the people who defend them. But I also recognize that this country doesn't provide that privilege to all. And I know all of us on this council is working hard every day to make sure that happens. So while I stand in respect of the flag, I also remain silent to reflect on all the people in this country, folks like Stephon Alonzo Clark, our undocumented families, our black families, and so many community members that are still excluded and often don't have the privileges that we have in this country. So this resolution really honors the legacy of Stephon Clark and the entire Clark family. And I just share that story because I feel like it was a pitiful moment for me as a young elected on the school board and what I believed in, and it goes back to this day. And so I feel incredibly honored to be presenting this resolution to the entire Clark family. I believe this resolution really affirms our commitment to our communities to prevent tragedies like Stephon from happening again. And as I've often shared, if we are to make communities safer for all, then we have to recognize the humanity of all people. And that's, when we think about a day of reflection, a week of reflection, a month of reflection of Stephon Clark, that's what it's about. It's about, everybody loves everybody, as Savante would say, and it's really about protecting humanity for all people. And so today and this week, may we reflect on the life and legacy of Stephon Clark and the ways in which Sacramento, I believe, have become a better place because of the Clark family. And with that, I would also like to hand over the mic to Councilmember Jennings to say a few words before we invite the Clark family to come up and say a few words.
Thank you for that round of applause for my fellow council member, because she said it all. And it deserves another round of applause, if you will. You spoke from your heart today, and I really appreciate that. And speaking of heart, I want to talk to the Clark family to let you know the impact that you've made to Sacramento in the five years since the death of your brother, your son, your grandson, your cousin, you know, whatever the case may be. And we are all so proud of everything that you have done to this point, and we know the best is yet to come. All right? So just on behalf of this council, the mayor, and the city council, we wanted to support you financially, because it's easy to say we support you, but when we put money behind it, it helps to pay the bills. Yes. So I just want to let you know that every single member of this council came through with a donation from their office in order to fill the void and to be able to help the effort of what you're doing. And each person did what they could, and we overachieved your goal. And I won't put numbers out there, but we overachieved your goal, and that's a good thing. So I just wanted to let you know, on behalf of this council, this mayor, this council of the city of Sacramento, we are behind you, we support you, and like I said, we look forward to the best that's yet to come yet. So thank you so much.
First of all, Mayor Potem and Councilmember, beautiful words, really eloquent. And, you know, when you speak from the heart in the way you did, it just, I won't forget what you said, probably ever. Which reminds me of something else I will never forget. One of the indelible moments of my mayorship and maybe that period of time, a terrible time that we went through together as a community, was my interaction with Savante Clark here in this chamber. And that was a difficult moment, but I want to tell you what I felt then and what I feel now. What I saw in that raw moment was a brother in great pain and a brother who had suffered an unspeakable loss. And what I am so proud of is what you have become and what you have done in this community and what your entire family has done to help us move closer towards that elusive idea of justice for all, but what you also have done to help us heal, without giving ground about how you feel and your anger, but doing it in a way that has helped bring people together and our community together. And I count it as one of the treasures of my mayorship and my life, that after that moment, which we all remember, that you and I became friends and that we continue to be friends and allies, 392 and all the other incredible work that you and the Clark family have done. And so we honor Stephon's legacy, but we honor you, and we thank you for continuing to seek a better world. Thank you.
Grandma Sequita and Savante Clark, would you like to come up to say a few words? I believe Mama Clark Sequet's on Zoom as well, but would love for you both to come up and say a few words, and then we can present you the resolution.
I just want to thank you, everybody, from the bottom of my heart, for what you have done for the family. And Myveng, I give a special shout-out to you, because when I was out there walking with you in the community, talking to the families, you was there for me, you know? And with the children, I worked with the children, the Blessed Child over there in Coral Gables. Right after my grandson got killed, this young lady, her brother got killed, right behind us in Coral Gables. And Pastor, he helped us, the family, Ms. Jackie M. and all. But I just want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you have done, from the bottom of my heart. Love you guys. That's it.
Well, now we got that out the way. I appreciate you all. Those kind words, Myveng, I love you forever. Rick Jennings, my brother, my brother, brother, supported us since day one. Sean Laloe, can't forget my guy, knocked on doors with his brother. I love him in District 2 so much. We gotta look out for District 2. Shout out to Katie. I love you, Katie. Appreciate you for all the support you've had for the Clark family as well. And, you know, this Day of Reflection means a lot to me and my family. The Murals means a lot to us. The AB 392 means a lot to us. All these things, the school and all these things, means a lot to us. But, you know, but every day, we miss our brother, you know? And this kind of warms my heart because it commemorates his life and legacy in a positive light, you know? And a lot of people talk about who Stephon was when he was alive, and they don't, they fail to realize that he was a kid. He was only 22 years old. He was really a young man growing up in a tough environment. And after my brother passed away, and I felt some type of way because they were judging a man who's no longer here to defend himself. And so I wanted to fight for his legacy and do schools and resource centers and murals and laws. I wanted to do whatever I can to make his name live in a positive light. And I think five years later, Stephon has done more in five years than most men will do in a lifetime, honestly. And I believe his name will live in a positive light for generations and generations. And I know that if I'm ever hated for anything, it's probably because I jumped on your desk.
Not hated. That's the point. Not. Not. That's what I tried to speak to.
That's probably why these things are here, huh? Are these guys? Extra security. They came prepared, Dr. Porter. But, you know, I'm grateful, and my family loves you. I always joke with my grandma, like, she loves the mayor more than me, you know, because she loves seeing this guy, you know what I mean? Even just for five minutes. But she loves him. And, you know, so this means a lot to us, like I said, when it comes to commemorating his life and legacy in a positive light. And I hope we can work more strategically on Stephon's house. You guys know, is what I've been working on for the last three years, on trying to build a safe and a brave space for families that have been impacted by community and police violence, because there's so much work that has to be done there. But most importantly, I want to just give one more special shout-out to my brother, Rick Jennings, because I called him last minute. I told him I had seven days of events planned, and I was low on the lot, and he came through and looked out, and he pretty much made sure we got the whole Legacy Weekend done for these impacted families. So on behalf of all the impacted families that will be here throughout the Legacy Week, we appreciate all your offices, we appreciate all of you. And Rick Jennings, we really appreciate you, brother, for making that call.
Well, one thing I want to make sure you know.
Yes, sir.
This was a collective effort.
Yes, yes. We thank all of you.
I mean, every single one of us did what we needed to do to help the family.
Appreciate that.
To keep the legacy going forward.
Appreciate it.
We are there by your side, as I told you before. We will never leave you. We will always be by your side. I will never replace your brother, but I will always be your brother.
Yes, sir.
Hear me?
I hear you.
But to give credit where credit's due, somebody was calling me at 6:00 PM on Friday night, and it was that guy over there.
That's love, that's love. And, you know, and this is all good and all, but you guys know, before I leave, I got a call for justice and accountability for my brother, Stephon Clark. The cops who killed my brother still work the streets today. They need to be held accountable on not just some levels, but all levels. And I have to say that before I leave, because it's the right thing to do. All right? Love you all. All right.
Come on, y'all, y'all, come on, come on, Grandma.
Mayor, you want to join me? Coach, join me down?
Oh, family, it's the family, y'all. Thank you, man, thank you.
Do I still get to speak?
Oh, Mama Clark's on the Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Where is my baby? Where is she?
Open the gates on us, man.
I'm right here.
Right where?
Everybody.
Mama Clark's on the line, too. Could she say if you...
Yes, she can.
for these impacted families. So on behalf of all the impacted families that will be here throughout the Legacy Week, we appreciate all your offices, we appreciate all of you. And Rick Jennings, we really appreciate you, brother, for making that call.
Well, one thing I want to make sure you know.
Yes, sir.
This was a collective effort.
Yes, yes, we thank all of you.
I mean, every single one of us did what we needed to do to help the family. To keep the legacy going forward. We are there by your side, as I told you before. We will never leave you, we will always be by your side. I will never replace your brother, but I will always be your brother.
Yes, sir.
Hear me?
I hear you.
But to give credit where credit's due, somebody was calling me at 6:00 PM on Friday night. And it was that guy over there.
That's love, that's love. And you know, and this is all good and all, but you guys know, before I leave, I got a call for justice and accountability for my brother Stephon Clark. The cops who killed my brother still work the streets today. They need to be held accountable on not just some levels, but all levels. And I have to say that before I leave because it's the right thing to do. All right, love you all, all right. Come on, y'all, come on, come on, Grandma.
Mayor, you want to join me? Coach, join me down?
Oh, it's the family, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Do I still get to speak?
Oh, Mama Clark's on the Zoom.
Oh, yeah. Where is she?
I'm right here.
Right where?
Everybody.
Mama Clark's on the line too, could she say? Yeah, let's take a photo with her Zoom in the back.
I'm with the sister. We're on our way to Sacramento.
There she is.
I just want to tell you guys that I appreciate the efforts of the city in commemorating the life and legacy of my son Stephon Clark. I really appreciate you speaking the verbiage that I created for the resolution. And let's go Sacramento, moving upward and onward.
Thank you, Mama Clark.
Like, walking, and giving.
Oh, we don't have her on Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Should have kept her on Zoom. Put her back.
One, two, three.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Okay, cool.
Do you want to share with this?
Yes, oh, one more.
Okay, I'll do here.
All right, members, thank you very much. Thank you, Van, Mayor Protem Veng. Members, let us move to the consent calendar. The city clerk just informed me that we're going to pull item one because there's still some additional work the staff needs to do to bring that forward. Are there any questions or requests regarding the consent calendar items two through eight?
Just a vote?
Oh, I'm, I put my name in.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilman.
Item four, I'll have to abstain because I sit on the board of Wynn Youth. It's just, it's one of the programs that's being given money.
Okay, so as we vote, which I'm sure will be unanimous vote, let's mark Councilmember Maple as abstaining on item four, please. All right, is there motion second on the consent calendar? Dies for lack of a second, there goes the consent calendar.
I heard LaLoy.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Okay. Speak louder. I'm sorry, second by Councilmember Sean LaLoy. Okay, do we have public testimony?
I have no hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar.
All in favor of the consent calendar item, am I missing something? I'm sorry.
I was going to comment on four.
Go, go right ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, sorry, everything was moving so quick.
Go, go, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity just to thank Nick and Mario for briefing me on item number four. I understand that 10% of our dollars have to be spent on young folks. And so I just want to acknowledge that these are one-time funding. And I know in November 2022, the voters passed the Sacramento Children's Fund. And one of the intent was to support programs such as this. And so just wanted to flag that for all of my colleagues. I know that this is one-time funding that we're supporting for incredible organizations that are working with our transitional aged youth who are unhoused. And want to give a shout out specifically to Waking the Village, if you're watching this, because they served many of our transitional aged youth, many of our unhoused youth in District Eight. So I want to give a shout out to them. But just wanted to remind folks that this is one-time funding and that once those grants are done, the need is still incredibly dire. So really hoping that we can flag that. I know that we're going to be in the process of creating commission and oversight for these dollars in particular. But this is one, this is one issue area that I know many of the voters and folks who organized around Major L, the Sacramento Children's Fund, really wanted to make sure that we support our young people. And so I just wanted to share that. Also want to thank Nick, just for all the great work he's doing in the Department of Community Response to make sure that we're moving the city forward. So thank you so much, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Consent calendar items two through eight, with Councilmember Maple being marked abstain on four. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, consent calendar passes. We now move to the one public hearing we have tonight, which is item nine.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Jose Quintanilla, I'm with the Community Development Department. This item is P 23 001, Rail Yards Temporary Surface Parking Lots. Little history, in 2016, a sports complex for Major League Soccer was approved because development of the stadium is expected early on in the development of the rail yards. A temporary parking solution was needed. So as an interim solution, 11 lots for temporary parking were approved within the rail yards development. Since 2016, development has occurred on three of these 11 lots. So this project requests entitlements to amend the development agreement to add three additional lots for temporary parking use. And this parking would be for the music venue, which is proposed, which has been approved for the paint shop, which is in the Central Shops Plaza, construction of which is soon anticipated. In addition to the amendment to the DA, the project needs a conditional use permit and site plan and design review for the temporary parking facilities. These facilities have a sunset date for the end of 2029. Staff recommends approval as this proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and the rail yard specific plan, supports the continued redevelopment of the rail yards, which is not fully developed and still needs infrastructure to support this eventual build out. On February 9th, the Planning and Design Commission considered this item and unanimously recommended approval of this project. With that, that concludes my presentation. The applicant, Josh Leachman, is here for, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Josh, you want to come up and say a word or two, please?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You know, thank you for having me here. I just wanted to say one thing in just more of an observation. Like, you know, listening to the previous discussion on the consent and now following it up with something on surface parking is just kind of an interesting kind of emotional curve that you all probably have, you know, quite frequently. But when the rail yards was contemplated in 2016 and/or the entitlements were revisited, I think it always contemplated surface parking. At the time, soccer was anticipated to take the lead, being the demand for that surface parking. And of course, things changed, timing has changed. And now we have a tremendous use with the redevelopment, rehabilitation of the paint shop and a great tenant to really be catalytic for the rehab of the central shops. The surface parking is instrumental to that use. Perhaps for the past two and a half, three years, we've been working diligently with staff on operational analysis, event traffic management plan. Ultimately, we negotiated where those surface parking lots are located. We came back quite a bit on the number of surface parking stalls needed. These are temporary, there's mechanisms in place to continuously address demand and evaluate demand and modify as needed. There's a sunset date. And with that, I'll conclude, and if you have any questions, feel free.
This is, again, one of those seemingly obscure items that is actually really, really important. Because there is so much left to do out in this visionary rail yards project between the city and DRV and all of the other partners. We, I hope, 2023, we're poised, right?
We are.
Live music venues.
We are, we are.
Do you transform that shop? The S-word. Soccer, still alive.
Still alive.
2023.
Yeah, and I...
Be the year.
I will say you'll start to see...
It's key, we need parking.
Yeah, and you'll start to see the progress here, hopefully in a few months.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to echo your excitement about some of the things that are coming. I think I mentioned on the last tour we did of the area that I have this vision of people taking the train to Sacramento for music instead of the other way around, that this new development and some of the work happening. And I want to thank staff, I know you did a lot of work on this to make sure that it fit with our long-term vision for this area. So really grateful that this is moving forward, so we can see more move forward. So with that, I'm happy to open and close the public hearing, Mayor, and move the item.
Very good, thank you so much. Seconded, do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have no hands, I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you all.
What's that, I don't know who seconded it, but somebody did.
Sorry.
Somebody did it. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
I have no hands, I have one hand raised for public comment, I have none in chambers. Do you want to take those?
Let's take the one, yes.
Perfect. Call in user one.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I want to say to Protem, Myveng, that was a wonderful gesture you did to the Stephon Clark family as well as City Councilman Jennings. That's a very, that's an example of humanitarian. And you have to have a lot of courage to speak out like that. And speaking of Protem, Myveng, and also the mayor, I was notified that there was a wonderful town hall meeting in Meadowview. I have friends out there. And they told me that was a wonderful town hall meeting. It was supposed to be for an hour and it went two. So when you get around to D2, I'm sure you can figure out between you and Mr. LaLoy, City Councilman LaLoy, how to make that happen. Because there's a lot of people that are looking forward to listening to what the mayor has to say because they know he cares about Del Paso Heights. And so they're looking forward to that. Then I wanted to end by saying that our cheesecakes have gone viral in the Bay Area of all places. And it was because of the millennials and Stephon, Devonte Clark. He's very familiar with me and he can reach out to Mr. LaLoy's staff to find out how to reach me. But there's some exciting things going on, Mayor, and we look forward to the D2 Town Hall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have two more speakers, Samuel Lewis, and then I want to say Lucian. Samuel?
Hello. Y'all moved hella quick. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. My name is Samuel Lewis, my pronouns are they/them. I'm here to talk a little bit, I was going to talk about the consent item of item four, which would talk about youth transitional shelter housings in Sacramento. I was here to talk a little bit about my experiences with Sacramento youth housing programs and shelters, especially in regard to the LGBT community centers and programs. Yeah, that kind of just threw me off. It's okay. I just, I would like to say, I would like there to be a longer discussion with... It's really hard for people who are struggling to understand what's happening in their local government. I'm very proud of our youth to be able to learn themselves. So coming here every day, I learn something new and that's amazing. But there is a significant disconnect through the city, the funding, and the nonprofit organizations that are helping their youth. And I would like there to, just for food for thought, have youth be more inclined in the rooms to talk about our experiences where youth fall through the cracks in our systems of care, especially in our shelter programs. Yeah, that's all I'm going to say now, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lucian. I want to say Mordo, you'll have to correct me.
Hello, city council members. My name is Lucian Mordokai, my pronouns are they/them, and I'm disabled, trans, and queer youth experiencing homelessness for the past four years in Sacramento County. In those four years, I have lived on the streets and in cars, couch surfing in shelters. I'm here today in hopes my words may make you actually think and be aware of how many aspects of TAE housing programs and resources are inadequate. More specifically, I'll be speaking on my experience at the LGBT Center Short Term Transitional Program, also known as STEP. Before entering STEP, I was told by multiple staff that the accessible room would be available to me as I'm not physically able to make it up the three flights of stairs to the bedrooms. Not even two days into my stay at STEP, I was told by LGBT Center staff I was to move upstairs and if I was unable, I'd be exited immediately. Because it was never an ADA room, only a COVID recovery room. It was never... Sorry. I was later told by another staff member the reason that I could not access the room was because it was not ADA compliant as it had been in the past, because it lacked two adequate entryways. I felt so unseen and dismissed by the LGBT Center as well as disappointed. It seemed as though housing advocates, managers, and LGBT staff did not have adequate training or resources. I had a lot more to say on this because I thought I had five minutes to speak, but you guys went too fucking fast. Because it implied that you had failed the youth as if the county hasn't already failed us. So I leave you with the question of, does that sound like your approach to attempt ending homelessness in Sacramento County is working? That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Leywanda Burrell. Burrell?
Hello, Mayor, city council members. My name is Leywanda Burrell and I am here to speak a little bit to back up what the person prior to me was saying, the homelessness. I have myself experienced homelessness for, it'll be a year tomorrow. This is a fairly trying situation for me. My very, very first time ever experiencing homelessness. Me, myself, I would like to see more resources. More, a lot more resources, I should say. I do have a Section 8 voucher. I am a Section 8 client, however, still homeless. Any input, any direction you may be able, or anyone may be able to provide, would greatly be appreciated.
Can we have somebody, please, me and Ms. Burrell, Laura, anything you can do to help this person, please, Ms. Burrell? We'll do our very best, okay? Make sure you're eligible, connected, maybe there's a voucher we could get you for tonight or for a couple nights, I don't know what your situation is, but we'll do everything that we can, okay?
You so much.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Laura, right there, okay? That gentleman is walking.
Thank you.
The back row, okay? God bless.
Mayor, I have no more speakers this evening.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to council ideas and questions, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Oh, I got unmuted, okay, there we go. I got muted, unmuted. Wow.
Wow. So I have a couple of announcements, and then an AB 1234 report. Just wanted to announce the state of the River District is happening next Wednesday, I believe. Both the mayor and I will be there to speak. This is one of our burgeoning and on-the-brink business districts, so I hope my colleagues or anyone from the public knows you can still get tickets. I believe they're free to go. It's at Mozak on Jaboom Street over there, so I hope you'll join us. And then the following Saturday, on March 25th, we will have the Chavez March. This is the 21st Annual Chavez March. It will begin at 10:00 AM at Southside Park here on Sixth and T Street. I'm sure, I know a lot of my colleagues will be there as well. I hope you'll join us. It's hosted by United Latino's Labor Center for Latin American Advancement in the Sacramento AFL-CIO. And so Sixth and T Street, again, on Saturday, March 25th, in District Four at Southside Park. And then finally, my AB 1234 report is that I traveled to Washington DC last week to participate in Local Progress's Leadership Collaborative. This is a national network of local electeds who are meeting from cities all over the country, big cities like New York City and Baltimore and small cities that I'd never heard of before. But we got to share really what's working, what's not working in our communities, best practices for all sorts of stuff. You know, people talk about city manager evaluations, right, which is something we're doing, and I'm like, send me your forms, let's talk about it. So really excited to take some of the things we've learned there and bring them to Sacramento, hopefully. And I hope my colleagues, if any of you are interested in joining, the next convening is in September in St. Louis, and it's just really, really cool to meet with other local electeds who are going through very similar challenges, our stuff here in Sacramento, but is unique, but also not unique, as we know. And so they have a lot of cool ideas that I'm really excited to bring back and look forward to talking to you all about them in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick announcement. This Saturday at 9:00 AM, 9:00 AM at Granite Regional Park, we're going to be partnering up with SAC United, our Parks Commissioner, Chair of the Parks Commission, Victoria Vasquez, and my office to do some tree planting. Granite Regional Park was once a mine pit, and now we've reclaimed it. We're reclaiming it. Now it's a great regional center. We're just talking to the mayor about how, you know, not only former Mayor Steinberg and Lloyd Connolly, former Judge Connolly, and even federal Judge Kim Mueller had a hand in making that a regional asset, but we'll be planting trees, because it does get hot out there when we have thousands of people out there for soccer. So join us at 9:00 AM at Granite Regional Park off Power and Road for some tree planting this Saturday at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. Great. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, mayor. I just wanted to share some events in spirit of celebrating Stephon Clark's legacy. There are lots of events happening this week, but I do want to just highlight a few that's happening in my district and one in District Two. Tomorrow night, 6 to 9 o'clock at Genesis Church, is the 5th Annual Stephon Clark Legacy Dinner. It's a fundraiser with Reverend L. Sharpton as well, and that's happening at Genesis Church in District Eight. And then on Thursday, March 16th, there's going to be the 1st Annual Legacy Ride Along at multiple locations in District Six, District Eight, and District Four, and in the county. But the start site is at the burial site at 6509 Fruit Ridge Road. And then on Friday is the Block Party, happening in District Eight, Stephon Clark Block Party at Hampton Park, at 75110 Wayne Scott Way. That's from 3:00 to 7:00 on Friday. And then on Sunday is the 5th Annual Mother's Brunch, led by Grandma Saquita, and inviting folks to attend to that event. That will be happening in District Two. The address is 1031 Del Paso Avenue. If you're wondering, where can I go to find all these events that Councilwoman is going through, you can go to www.imSACevents.org to actually get the details for all of the events that are happening this week for the Stephon and Clark Legacy Week. That's my announcement. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, mayor. I just really, you know, you've appointed me to several water agencies as part of my duty as being on City Council, and I just want to thank... I've had water tours. I've seen our water plant this past Monday, and went out to our regional sand treatment plant. And something that the council should be excited about, the Echo Water Project, is in the final check. We actually got to see them doing the final check, and is slated to come online. That's going to have some huge environmental benefits, not just for our area, but the greater region. So I thank staff for that. Couple events we're having for the first time over in West Lake Community Park, Food Truck Mania. Lots of good food is going to be out there. And then I'm just going to give a side shout out for everybody in the city of Sacramento, if you're traveling around. Girl Scout troops throughout this region have been hard hit, not just mine, but for people to understand, Girl Scouts, look at what they've sold pre-order, and there's about 10 days left for booth sales, and many of our troops have thousands of boxes left. With those boxes what are left, we are no longer able to sell them, and we have to pay the council, the Girl Scout council. So let's say we have 3,000 boxes left, and they're six bucks each. We owe 18,000, and we, as a Girl Scouts, cannot recoup that cost. So if you see Girl Scouts out there, please buy a box, buy a box to donate. It's not just affecting my girls troop, but it's every troop in the region. We did get a small extension that we could do wagon sales. We can't do booth sales after the time is done, but if you got a Girl Scout knocking on your door, please consider purchasing and...
Do more.
Thank you.
The office loves it. It's great.
They freeze phenomenally.
Mayor just committed to that.
And then on Friday, I actually look forward to my colleagues and I heading out to Habitat for Humanity for Women Built, so thank you. I look forward to us getting out there and doing that. And then I really want to thank former council member, current Senator, Angelique Ashby. You know, I've been in, what am I, 92, 93, whatever trustee Singh said, but I get to have a park ribbon cutting, and it's really a testament to the work she did, you know, you as chief of staff, so I hope to see you out. We're having at 4 o'clock a ribbon cutting of the Meadows Park Playground, Part Two. We're going to have popcorn, and there will be a Girl Scout booth there as well. And then Saturday, our prayers to Mother Nature for a decent day, but still wind. We are having our first D1. It's a kite fun fly event, so there is an individual in our community who has partnered with some of our schools, and kids are learning how to make kites. And we're going to have a kite competition with lots of food and city services and others. There's going to be DJ and youth performances out there from 9:00 to 1:00 at Blackbird Park, but everybody is welcome to come join. It's pretty cool to see kids make some kites, and D1 is the perfect area, because we have a lot of open space that is next to open, that is definitely a wind tunnel. So it's on the west side of I-5 and D1, so come on out to Blackbird Park on Saturday. Thank you.
That's great. Lot of good stuff. Councilmember Talamontes.
So I'm doing a fire ride-along for 24 hours tomorrow, starting at 8:00 in the morning at Station 15, our Nighthawks. And if you don't know if you guys know those, but our Natomas High School is also the Nighthawks, and I guess we get the most response calls in the nighttime. I've never pulled a 24-hour niter, not even in college, so gonna have lots of caffeine, and I'm really looking forward to, yeah, just being with our fire department and seeing what it's like to be in their shoes. And I'm also looking forward to Friday and building a house, and then on Thursday, honoring our mayor for your Arts Hero Award at the B Street, right? It's on my calendar. So packed evening, excited, and, oh, the St. Patrick's Day parade at the old waterfront on Saturday, too. So Sacramento is booming with events, really exciting to see, and honored to be a part of everything.
Councilmember Maple, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A lot of great stuff. Go ahead.
Thank you, and ditto on Habitat, really excited for that. I also get to join two of my distinguished colleagues here, Councilmember Kaplan and Councilmember Talamontes, for the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce, they're doing a panel discussion with us, and that's going to be on Thursday, the 16th, at the Creative Space, which is at 1525 U Street, so in Ms. Valenzuela's district, and really excited about that, getting to know one another and getting to talk about what we're trying to accomplish here. I also wanted to shout out an event. It's the Union Trades Awareness Fair. It's going to be taking place in my district at 5735 47th Avenue. So this is a great opportunity to get to know your local unions, your apprenticeship programs, and participate in the job fair. They're going to have a... You can pick up power tools, you can build tiny homes, you can grab blowtorches, make toolbox, toolboxes, and a lot more. Last time I was there, I was able to actually weld, which I wouldn't recommend anyone letting me do again, but it was a fun experience. And then looking out in the future, I am blessed to have the Panama Pottery Building. It's one of the oldest historic buildings in Sacramento in my district, and the owners of that property are going to be talking about their new plans and vision for the property itself. So we're hosting a community discussion at Hollywood Park Elementary on the 23rd at 6:00 PM. So those are some fun things coming up. Thank you.
You know, as the weather, we head towards spring, more events, more outdoor events. It's a great time. It's a great time for the community. Thank you all. Nothing else to come before the City Council. We're adjourned.